Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular council meeting, Midland Council, Wednesday, May the fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is being held virtually and will be broadcast on channel fifty-three and and is on Midland's YouTube channel for those who might want to take a look a bit later on. A few little bit later on. So I'll call the meeting to order, ask if there are any declarations of conflict.
Yes, I have a conflict with bylaw two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty. It's with patio leases and I will be declaring a conflict at that time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I guess Madam Clerk will pull that bylaw for a separate consideration.
Yes, I provided you with a motion. So we'll do the one single motion for the the one bylaw that Deputy Mayor Ross declared a conflict, and then you could do the motion for the rest of them. So you'll have two motions to adopt the bylaws tonight.
You're way ahead of me. Thank you very much. So I'll read the land acknowledgement at the start that the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people, now known as the water by council comprised of those of the First Nation, Rama First Nation, and Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the preconfederation Treaty five and Treaty sixteen, and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron, Wampanoag, and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to large and diverse community indigenous peoples. With that, I'd ask everybody if they would just join the silent confirmation, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. I see a motion here moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Councillor Downer, that the contents of the regular council agenda for May the fourth, two thousand and twenty-two be approved as amended. Are there any comments or questions with respect to the agenda, or any additions or deletions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. Secondly, then, we have a motion moved by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that the items and related recommendations contained within the May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two consent agenda as items, having been considered by council be adopted. Comments or questions with respect to the to the motion? I see Deputy Mayor Ross and then councillor Gordon, please.
Thank you, worship through you. I just had a two questions, one for clarification for more for the public. And number two, I just on the lease agreement on the for the Island Express. Maybe the clerk, I apologize for throwing you under the bus, but if you can quickly just explain what how we get into lame duck. I know quite a few public have asked and maybe a quick explanation on how that works. So people are aware of how our council. And secondly, after reading the lease agreement, I did notice, and I apologize for not asking earlier, but I just noticed I was only for one year. And I wondered if there's any type of first right of refusal, et cetera, et cetera, for that that lease. That's all. Simple, if I could.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We'll go with the lame duck first. Madam Clerk.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross, through you to the rest of council. In Midland's case, if less than seven members of the nine-member council will be returning, the lame duck clause is triggered. And there are two occasions when this could happen. So from nomination day through to the end of the current term of council, so August nineteenth to November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, or from final voting day, so October twenty-fourth, to the start of the new term of council, which would be November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. So at each point, we will advise council if they are in a lame duck situation. Is that okay?
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Next question would be for Mr. Campbell. I just wanted to make sure that that lease, if there's first rate of fuel, if there's opportunity, I apologize for the, I know I don't want to get into much discussion, but I thought I'd ask. It's Campbell.
Yeah. The the request was for a one-year lease, and that's what was granted. I think the the individual wants to see how the business is going to work out this year, and if successful, I'm sure he'll ask for a lease next year, and we'd be glad to help him out.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Councillor Gordon, please.
Thanks. I just wanted to expand on the lame duck. Thanks for asking that, Deputy Mayor Ross. I'm wondering, perhaps, we understand that the concept of when it could kick in and the two times, but just for maybe the public and perhaps some of us here, what exactly would that mean? What would be impact of us be being in a lame duck situation? What would we stop being able to do? What would we still be able to do? Perhaps the clerk or the CEO could expand on what being in a lame duck position is if we were to find ourselves in it or when we are, but that actually means to the material business of this board. I have another one after that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, through you, your worship to councillor Gordon. Under section two seventy-five of the municipal act, there are certain acts that are restricted when you're in a lame duck situation. There's four. So the appointment or removal from office of any officer of the municipality, the hiring or dismissal of any employee of the municipality, the disposition of any real or personal property of the municipality, which has a value exceeding fifty thousand dollars at the time of disposal, and making any expenditures or incurring any other liability which exceeds fifty thousand dollars. Now, having said that, there are exceptions to clause C and D. They don't apply if the disposition or liability was included in the the most recent budget adopted by council before nomination day in the elections. So if it was adopted by council, you can go ahead and make the decisions. You can't just, it's any new new items coming forward in that amount are restricted.
Perfect. Thanks. My second one was just to call, you know, something out that's on the consent agenda, and that's that the Great Lakes Waterfront Trail. There's a report in here for those that are interested. Basically, there's going to be one hundred and sixty participants, and they're mostly mature cyclists coming to our community from all five front, all five provinces, but from five provinces and five US states, and about fifty percent of them apparently going to be staying in hotels, as you know, I might opt to if I was doing that. But the other half have requested to camp. And what that's going to mean is that, you know, we had to clear the way with some some changes to our bylaw and enforcement. There's going to be like almost fifty tents down in Little Lake Park for the first time in, I don't know how long, that are going to be camping down in the lake park on the far side of the volleyball tent. So on your way to the lawn bowling, if you're to wander down that direction. So this is like a proof of concept and something that I know councillor Shesky's got a big grin, something we've talked about and changing some of the or reverting to some of the the historic uses of Little Lake Park. And here's a perfect example where there's an event coming to town, and people want to avail themselves of a beautiful little lake park and that nice soft grass. And that's going to be happening this summer, so on August seventh, actually. So for those who follow, I'm sure the town will have more publication on this, but check out our online agenda for some details about this. The staff report is pretty comprehensive, and I look forward to us hosting this this summer in some tents in Little Lake Park again.
Thank you, councillor. It's certainly, I was interested, this is why we were talking about the agenda, going through the agenda for today and wondering where they were going to, what what was for breakfast, because apparently there are no cooking fires or campfires. But they're eating up at the, they'll all be eating up at the NSSRC, apparently. So for those who may be concerned about fifty campfires or fifty fires, that's not, that's not happening. So just just to put some clarity around that. Mr. CAO, you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you. May your worship. I think this is a great example of, this is an organization that I think has has been been wonderful to work with. Everything I've heard from from our team is they've been very responsive. They've been very responsible in terms of how they're approaching this. So they're taking care of all the logistics around this, the security, anything that they need to ensure that, you know, they're taking care of whatever they're bringing in the facility, but also taking care of the space. So I think it is a great example of how this type of, you know, economic benefit, as well as use of a beautiful site can be another, just another attraction for Midland. So I do appreciate the attention.
Thank you. I think it's important to point out, too, that this is an expansion of the Great Lakes Waterfront Trail. And it's a welcome expansion. Simcoe County has been putting a lot of effort into increasing the the visibility of Simcoe's trail network and expanding it and tapping into the whole cycle movements. The the whole cycle movement throughout, particularly Quebec and along Saint Lawrence and the Lower Lake. So it's it's real, as Councillor Gordon says, it's an opportunity to look at some of, perhaps a trial balloon in terms of use of heritage uses of Little Lake Park and expanding our visibility throughout the biking community. Councillor Mania, had you hand up?
Thank you, worship. I was just going to comment that I love the the concept, and we we saw that a couple of years ago when there was a festival carnival style, and there was a few trailers down at that area for camping. And I was just going to mention that if there are other groups, obviously, this is not something that we're going to permit all the time, but if there are groups that are looking for potential camping, I guess we would direct them to staff Nicole Major or Mr. Campbell. And obviously, there's significant risks and liabilities that they'd have to review. But I guess that would be a nice thing to mention to people that if they are, were interested to follow up with staff, because I think that would be amazing if, in the next little while, we could develop a way that more groups can have these kind of one-off incidences, scouts, brownies, girl guides, that type of thing, not all the time, but maybe once or twice a year. I think that would be really nice to camp in the park, but one thing at a time. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments or questions with respect to the agenda and the consent agenda? I don't see any. So with that, I'll ask the question, all those in favor? Thank you. That that too carries. The next is a motion by councillor Downer, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that council resolve into the committee of the whole. And with that, I'll turn it over to the deputy mayor.
Thank you very much, your worship. Committee of all this evening, we have no public meetings, and we have no presentations, but we do have two wonderful award of merits. And I will turn it back over to your worship to to present the award of merits this evening.
Briefly, we didn't actually, I know we moved into the committee of the whole, but we didn't actually redo the motion to move into it. I don't know if that's.
We didn't vote on the motion.
Oh, we didn't call a motion on it. We're just moving right along because we want to get to the leafs, but.
Yeah.
Sorry. My apologies. Procedure.
My bad. All in favor of moving in the committee of the whole. Thank you.
Wonderful. And now I'll start. As I mentioned, we have the two ward of merits this evening, and I'll I'll turn it over to your worship to present the two recipients. Congratulations to them both, and it's a great evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As residents may know, we each year sit down and look at who might they might select to receive what's known as the award of merit, which recognizes individual contributions to the community, whether it's through service in the municipality or service to the community within various service clubs and other not-for-profit groups. And it's it's always an interesting process to understand who actually is in the community and and the contributions they're making. The result of this year's selection, we have two winners this year. And the first is Bernard Buzz Deschamps, and the award reads for outstanding accomplishment unwavering and extraordinary dedication to the sports community, most particularly for his remarkable accomplishments, Bun's Kids, giving selflessly of his time to ensure that all kids have an opportunity to be involved in sports. And the mayor and members of council extend the commendation and appreciation of all our citizens. Just a bit of background about Mr. Deschamps. A lot of people in town will know who he is anyway, but just for those who are new to the municipality. Mr. Day, our first award, of course, is to Bernard Buzz Deschamps. He was born in Pennington Machine on seventeenth December nineteen thirty-nine. He was a professional hockey player in the sixties and seventies. He played in seven leagues over the course of his career and was instrumental in the development of the Midland Sports Hall of Fame, and was also inducted as an athlete, as well as being a member of the Billard Indians baseball team. His first played junior sea hockey was with Pennington Machine Hurons. After being drafted by the New York Rangers, Buzz spent the next ten years playing professional hockey from coast to coast for such teams as the Subway Wolves, the Indianapolis Chiefs, Long Island Ducks, the Baltimore Clippers, the St. Paul Rangers, and the Los Angeles Blades of the World Hockey Association before he finished his career with the province, province Reds, rather, of the American Hockey League in nineteen eighty, nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine. The Los Angeles Kings of the National Hockey League drafted Deschamps, but he chose retirement instead. Buzz spearheaded the creation of Bun's Kids in the nineteen nineties, which has enabled hundreds of children to participate in sports and recreation activities in Midland and area by providing financial assistance to as many less fortunate children as possible to allow them to participate in various recreational and character-building activities within our region. The Bun's Kids organization was a tribute to his father, Bun Deschamps. Lifelong involvement in the buzz, his father's lifelong involvement in the Midland sporting community. There is no one more deserving of recognition for his community spirit and dedication to Bun's Kids, and those efforts represent a true sense of community and caring. And it is for this that we honor Buzz tonight. It's indeed a great pleasure to present the award of merit to Buzz Deschamps. And this is, this is the, what are you going to be able to see this or not, but this, you know, can't see, but this is the award. And congratulations and heartfelt thanks to Buzz Deschamps for his contribution to the community. Secondly, we have somebody that I remember very well, and I know that many people in Midland will. She used to have a column, wrote a book about Midland. It's it's Mary Haskell, and the award, sorry. The award reads for outstanding accomplishment and devotion to the community that has enriched Midland and its residents through her passion for writing and her years of involvement within the performing arts community, as well as her creativity and development of the town of Midland Code of Arms. Mayor and members of council extend the commendation and appreciation of all. Mary grew up in Owen Sound and moved to Midland during, deep in the depression of the late of the nineteen thirties with her husband George to raise their family. George worked for Ontario Hydro installing power lines to cottage country and the rural farms of the area. George soon went into business, though, with his brother-in-law, Leslie Barber, and opened Barber and Haskell, an electrical appliance business that is still a staple of Midland and area. In the early years, Mary worked in the family business and raised her family. Once her children had grown, the Haskells sold their shares of the business. Mary was able to devote more time to her hobby of researching and writing. In the mid-seventies, Midland Free Press editor Doug Reed asked Mary to write a weekly column after a call from Melonar Warwolf, Warfool. Sorry. The story about her father, former mayor of Midland, Mary's career as a newspaper writer was born. Mary Haskell wrote a weekly article for the Free Press for many years, sharing exciting stories of the people, places, and the history of of Midland and its surrounding community. Mary later became the director of the Huronia Museum, and in two thousand and two, Mary wrote a book of these stories that was published by the Huronia Museum called "Nosing Into the Past: Life and Time." It's been wrong, and I understand it's quite an interesting read. Mary's other passion was to perform in arts. She was a lifetime member and patron of the Huronia players, performing every duty from volunteering, acting to publicity. She also had an exceptional ability to find unique props for productions. Mary received numerous awards for her community service, including Huronia Museum's Heritage Award, Ontario Heritage Foundation Award, winner of a Toronto Star short story contest, and runner-up for a character award by Theatre Ontario. One of her accomplishments remains present in our very own council chambers, and that's the Code of Arms of Midland. In nineteen eighty-nine, Mayor Ted Simmons asked Mary to design the town's Midland's Code of Arms. After much research and hard work by Mary, Midland's Code of Arms was officially approved by the Governor General of Canada and Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth the Second. Mary always remained humble about her vast knowledge of local history and always shunned the word expert by saying, the more I learn, the more I find out I don't know. Community definitely benefited from her presence here. Today, it's with great pleasure to present the award of merit to the late Mary Haskell, and we welcome her daughter, Miss Elizabeth Beeden, who will be accepting this award on her mother's behalf, as Miss Beeden with us.
And your worship, I noticed Mr. Deschamps was also on the one the call, but.
Mr. Deschamps was with us.
Yes, Mr. Deschamps is here. So perhaps after Mrs. Beeden, if she would like to say a few words, then Mr. Deschamps can also.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Deputy Mayor. And congratulations to both.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm sure my mother would have appreciated the award very much. She was so proud of the town. Like to talk to a lot of people to find out what had been, you know, how the town has developed. You can hear me. I'll take it.
Yes, we can.
I can't get this thing to work properly.
No, you're doing great. Thank you.
Okay. But yeah, she would have been so proud to to receive this award. And I know she enjoyed the the work she did for the town, all the different organizations she belonged to, especially the museum. That was her favorite one, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really, I just recently saw an interview by Harvey Kirk of your mother.
Oh, yes.
Program that was run on CTV for a number of years, and it was quite remarkable, the breadth and depth of knowledge that your mother had about the development of this community right from its inception through to the point in time when Mr. Kirk interviewed her. So.
I don't think I even know half the things she did.
She did a lot.
Sorry to keep up with her.
Well, thank you. Mr. Deschamps, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were with us. Would you care to say something?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yep. Well, the Bun's Kids was a bit of a dream and a and a give back to all the wonderful mentors that I had growing up in Midland. And, you know, my dad was my first mentor, and along came the Wilcox family that made sure we had a place to play hockey. And then Reverend Self moved to Midland, which changed the whole landscape of the sporting in of Midland. Back in those days, we're allowed to play with, we're allowed to play with the kids in Pennington, and we had very good community relationships. But the people that, every summer, when I was playing pro hockey and I came home, my good friend Mac McCallum had a wonderful job for me down at the park, cutting the grass, taking care of the ballpark and so on. And I'll tell you, the Little Lake Park was really immaculate, and under his supervision, it was a wonderful place to. And the guy that's sitting on your right there, Mr. Downer, when I met Jim, when he was the mayor, I had an idea about starting the Midland Sports Hall of Fame, and Jim backed me up one hundred percent. And along with my friend Danny Woods and Brian Peters and Brian McCall and Lynn Morton, we made a real reality out of it. And I'm extremely proud that I was born and raised up in the Georgian Bay area. Wherever I go around the world, and I've had a great life in the world of hockey because of the efforts of all these coaches and mentors I had. And I never forget where I came from, and it was all due to the leadership of those gentlemen. And I'm extremely proud to get this award. So thank you very much for the recognition. I'll be up in your area probably at the end of the month, and maybe I can stop by and then pick it up. So that's what Mr. Trudeau ever lets us get in and out of any buildings. So anyways, thank you very, very much, Jim. You've been a great friend and a great leader, and I totally respect this award, and I I take it very deeply and appreciative. Thank you very much.
You for all you've done.
Thank you.
We'll see you in June. Despite Mr. Trudeau.
Okay, thank you.
I'll turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to both our recipients. Well, well, we deserved. Two people like this, Mr. Deschamps and Miss Haskell, sure make community what it are, are Midland what it is. So thank you so much for all the hard work and a long time coming for Miss Haskell, which we would have been able to do it earlier, but we finally got to it. So congratulations. And Mr. Deschamps, thank you so much. We go back a long way myself. Back in the days, I remember when you started Bun's Kids, and I had the pleasure of running the boatworks, and we had quite a few good get-togethers down there. And I still, one of my highlights is the day that the Stanley Cup came. So I still remember that you were able to bring the Stanley Cup to Midland, and I was sure I still have the photo. So yeah, congratulations to you and your family, and especially the, for all you've done for the Bun's Kids. And and once again, thanks to the Haskell's family also. We'll move on to, next up on the agenda would be a report from the CAO. Mr. CAO, you have your COVID update?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can, sir.
Thank you. Certainly, on behalf of the administration, I'd like to start by offering our congratulations as well to Mr. Deschamps and Mrs. Haskell and their families. Tremendous, tremendous contributions, obviously, to to the entire community, and just wonderful hearing, hearing from them and their families on their their tremendous careers, which would certainly continue through all those people in Midland who know them. So thank you for that. Terms of what's going on with the COVID situation, I think in Ontario, it wasn't, it wasn't a good day. There was, I think, a record number of deaths announced, or a high number in the last month in terms of deaths announced. Five deaths occurred in the last week in Simcoe Muskoka. That's about four hundred and sixty-nine in total. There are four people in the ICU, thirty-seven people in hospital. They are dealing with a higher-than-usual amount of admissions to hospitals, just in general, I think, is what what we've been hearing from the health unit. And as of May first, about eighty-two percent of Simcoe Muskoka has had one dose, seventy-nine percent have had two doses, and about forty-eight percent have had three doses. Globally, there is, I think, some optimism. Certainly, COVID deaths have dropped, I think, to their lowest level since March of two thousand and twenty. So I think we're all hopeful that, you know, a lot of this is hopefully going behind us. But again, I think we're all vigilant and continuing to learn how to live with it and dealing with whatever comes to at us. So that's kind of the overall number situation. In terms of what's happening more locally at Town Hall, I think we can all certainly appreciate we're we're extremely busy in town. If you if you go anywhere in town, you're going to see a great deal of activity going on. I think a lot of people have certainly discovered Midland in terms of its attractiveness, certainly in the real estate market, in the development market, but also just the beauty of spring that certainly gets people out and about, and that that certainly means we're busy. We've also been extremely busy and, I think, fortunate, you know, with our long-term financial planning that we've been doing and the plans we've made to rehabilitate the town, as well as our grant success. I think we've done a really good job in the last few years at pursuing grants and making sure Midland people understand that Midland is a great place to invest. And then we're certainly seeing that in the grants that that we're being able to secure. So this is all certainly resulting in, and I and I think that's actually a record number for us. I'll be, I'll be honest. We've been looking at that number. I don't think we've ever received as much money from the grants aspect. So the process is working, and that that's a lot of work that goes into that. And I certainly want to thank the mayor for for what he's done to help advocate for us at AMO and and with our provincial and federal delegates. So that's that's resulted in a tremendous amount of work that you're seeing. You're seeing the server repairs, the harbor work, the playgrounds, the streets and roads. You're seeing our our clerk team, you know, taking care of the election, you know, that's coming up in the fall. You're seeing a tremendous amount of work probably happening in the procurement area. And this week, we welcomed a whole bunch of students that are getting up to speed on on helping us at the town, which has been wonderful to see them come back. With that, though, we've had to manage the impacts of COVID. And I think as we all know, and we've all seen that, we've all possibly even experienced that it is hitting a great number of people. The isolation rules are different, which actually is more of a benefit in managing our enterprise. So we're able to manage our resources a lot better with the current isolation rules. But there are people that are, you know, becoming infected and are being unfortunately not able to work for any given time. And in the municipal world, losing one one person. unfortunately uh not able to work for any given time. And in the municipal world, losing one one person can be quite detrimental to some services because you don't have a lot of um potential skills in some areas, and some people are uh may just know the file the best, so there might be some delays in what we're doing. So that's what we're living with. I think we've done a great job in managing it. Uh again, as I said, there's tremendous amount of demand. And and the big thing that we're really trying to take care of right now, in addition to getting ready for the election, is taking care of all the major events that we're planning. And there's a, there's a significant number of them coming. As obviously, the Butter Cart Festival is coming, which is our biggest one. Uh certainly, we haven't done that in a while, and it is the best one in Ontario. And to make sure it continues to be the best one in Ontario, that takes tremendous amount of effort. I was checking in with the plan today, and they all had the thumbs up, but you know, I I I really, really have an appreciation for how much work goes into it. They're still looking for volunteers. We're we're doing great actually on the volunteer front, but we still need more. So if you want to volunteer some time for a great uh community event, it it not only benefits the the community in spirit, but it benefits our businesses. So uh that's certainly one that uh you can sign up for. Uh we've got a fishing derby coming up around in in June, July timeframe. We've got the tall ships coming back. We've got Canada's Day. We've got cruise ships coming in. Uh so there's a tremendous amount going on in Midland. We're making sure we do this safe. Um we'll have the vax van available at some of these for people who want to take advantage of it when they can. We're making sure the protocols are in place. We're making sure there's lots of sanitation required. Uh but we really wanted to certainly make sure we we celebrate as well. So we're all looking forward to it, and I just wanted to to make sure you you understood that. And if you see some of those people working on those those events, um don't hesitate to give them a pat on the back. Was that a back to you, Deputy Mayor?
Wonderful. Any questions? Do you know what this time? I see none. Um we'll move on to uh notice of motions. Is there a notice of motion this evening? Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. I got a couple. I've already forwarded these and writing to the clerk. Uh the first one is that council convene an in-camera meeting within thirty days. Uh that's, you know, thirty days of when we finally debate this, so after the next meeting, to receive a legal update in relation to the status of potential and ongoing litigation and matters diverted from litigation through mediation. The second one is that council affirm our support of concerned Midland residents who remain opposed to the seasonal trailer park development proposed at Y-Hear Serena in our neighboring Tate Township by asking our two county representatives to oppose the approval when the matter comes before county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Um any other notice of motion at this point? I see none. Uh we'll move on to general announcements. General announcements at this evening. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you. Uh first is a, it's a shout out to the mayor. Um I sent him a request, a very last minute request, mind you, um for a proclamation for tomorrow, May fifth, which is National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls and Two-Spirited People. Uh affectionately known, you know, as Red Dress Day. In my background, I've got that up. Uh the town uh, I mean, the mayor was very receptive and managed to carve together a proclamation, you know, in one day's notice and arrange for a flag lowering tomorrow uh at ten AM. So uh just citing from the town community, the town of Midland recognizes this day with a proclamation and flags will be lowered at the municipal office, a brief ceremony scheduled for tomorrow uh with the mayor and deputy mayor. Uh all Canadians and residents are invited to show their support on May fifth by wearing red, hanging a red dresser shirt and supporting any local events in their community, as well as posting on their social media using the hashtags. Um hashtag MMIWG2S and hashtag why we wear red. So the flag lowering is tomorrow at uh ten AM on the Dominion Avenue side. Careful, the steps are, I think some of them are closed. And anyone wishing to attend the flag lowering, please remember to respect distancing protocols. I've got to be in Bowmanville for five thirty in the morning to pick my son up and get him back here. So I'm gonna be up bright and early and my my, do my level best to get back for this uh since I, you know, I put the request in. And also, I just wanted to relay from councillor Prost who sends her regrets this evening. I think she's enjoying some well-deserved time away. Uh that she's in full support of this, and she's the chair of our Indigenous Relations Committee, and uh she's here in spirit and uh quite, quite happy that this was done. So uh thank you to uh Mayor Strathern for making this happen. I know you get inundated with these requests, and I popped this one on you last second, so I do appreciate that.
So sorry, uh Deputy Mayor, if I could just speak to that um. For those who can't make it tomorrow, the proclamation will be almost uh on our uh council information package uh on Friday. It will be included for those who wish to to view it. I'd like to thank Counselor Gordon for pointing out that May the fifth is in fact a red dress day and proclamation. And uh it's really the wording I think he had posted on his website, manipulated to sound like a unofficial proclamation. So thank you for the wording. For the most part, and thanks to staff for um for stepping up and 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 uh getting this done. It's staff who really make the things happen around here most effectively, and so hats off to them for pulling that together. And and thank you to Counselor Gordon for bringing it to our attention. So but for those who wish to read the proclamation, it will be on our website. I'll I'll read it tomorrow, but it'll also be on our website on Friday, I believe. Yeah. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you worship, and thank you, Counselor Gordon, for uh both you wonderful, and thanks to staff as always. Any other announcements? I see none. I do have one and all I um, sorry, your worship, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I I just uh let's look at my card up here. I just wanted to let people know that I attended a a sod turning in Beaton today for Simcoe Village, and this is a uh an updated iteration of what's become a role model for seniors facilities in the province and I think beyond, but that's Penetang Machine, Georgian man, uh Georgian Village. And the new Simcoe Manor Village is modeled on on the Penetang Machine example. So I I would say to you that we were very fortunate that to uh, I think people know this, to get uh Georgian Manor in uh Georgian Village, rather, in in Penetang Machine to serve the local community. And I congratulate uh the uh the folks at Georgian Village for participating in the design of this new facility along with county staff. It's uh it's going to be a real game changer for the folks down in the Beaton New Cups area. So just thought we should recognize the accomplishments that have happened in our in our own backyard through through the uh rapid repeating of the thing and improvement on the model that was started here. So I thought people should might just want to know. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, your worship. Any others? Uh quickly, um I mentioned earlier about the Stanley Cup uh coming to Midland, and let's hope that we can bring it to Toronto. Hey, God, save that for Corey Oshewski. Uh go Leafs go, he's all ready to go. I know Mr. Dino is a big fan, but uh they looked anything like the first night. Uh they're the team to beat. But anyway, I just wanted to wish everybody, and I I we're gonna be done for all seven, so I wish everyone a good night tonight. So uh enjoy, go Leafs. And once again, congratulations to Mr. Uh Deshaun and the um and the uh Haskell family. Congratulations, uh well deserved. Counselor Maine, last word?
Uh, thank you. I don't have the details. I was trying to find it, but uh Georgian Bay District Secondary School is putting on Matilda. So the invites have gone out to the elementary schools. Uh they always get this sneak peek at it. I don't have the information, but if you follow up with the high school, uh it it's it's in May, so it's coming up in the next couple of weeks. Uh so uh take a look, uh check that uh performance out and support local. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Oshewski?
Last one, I swear. Uh that was inspired by Counselor Maine. Saint Teresa's High School is bringing back their um musical performances with a performance called Bring It Back. Uh I don't have the times and dates of the, just feeding off uh Council Maine's announcement. So if you're interested in getting to see the kids' talent, uh bring it back to Saint Teresa's as well as the show that Council Maine mentioned at the DSS.
And I've had the pleasure of seeing both the shows in the past, and they're always amazing. I'm I'm amazed at the productions they put on. So highly recommend that if you get a chance to go see either one or both. Uh thank you so much, everyone. I'll move on. Uh I'll have a motion moved by Counselor Chesky, second by Counselor Maine, at the committee of the whole resume, the formal council and uh rise and report. Is that uh sufficient, Madam Clerk? I want to make sure I have the wording. I don't have the motion in front of me because I was late.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you so much. All those in favor? So Carrie, your worship, you're up.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Uh next is um formal session now, so uh I have a motion by Counselor Chesky, seconded by Counselor Gordon, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of May fourth, twenty twenty-two be adopted as resolutions of council. Uh comments or questions with respect to the motion? Counselor Maine?
I was gonna say, big thank you to Fisher Fish Fisher Campbell and the Island Express. That's gonna be awesome, little boat uh leasing to be able to take you up to Georgia Bay uh National Park. That's just awesome. Thank you.
That's nice to see uh the taxi service leaving from here as opposed to going up Tony Harbors. Thank you, counselor. Um so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. That passes. Next, we have um we don't have any, uh sorry, we don't have any motions for which notice was given, so we'll deal with the bylaws first is by Counselor Maine, second by Counselor Cunningham, that the bylaw twenty twenty-two dash three zero being a bylaw to amend by law twenty twenty-two dash fifteen composite fees charges, patio applications be passed, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for declaring a conflict here.
I just want to uh remind that I do have a conflict, so I will not be voting on the.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh so noted, and I believe you have paperwork with the clerk as well. So that's the first bylaws on the table. Uh any comments or questions? Say none, then all those favor. Thank you, that carries. The mayor, uh clerk, please note that the deputy mayor's returned. Um next, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Ross, second by Councilor Gordon, that the following bylaws, bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, which is a lease agreement between the corporation, the town of Midland, and Fisher Campbell, operating as Island Express to provide for water taxi service and tour boat or charter boat for the town dock for a five-month term in twenty twenty-two. Bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, appointment of municipal law enforcement officers for the purpose of enforcing municipal bylaws within the town of bylaw twenty twenty-two dash two-nine, delegation of administrative signing authority by council and to repeal bylaw twenty nineteen dash fifty-five. Bylaw twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, adopt the estimates of all amounts required for the current year twenty twenty-two and to establish the rates of taxation for the current year. Twenty twenty-two. Bylaw twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two, appointment of a building chief rather, chief building official, deputy chief building official and building inspectors and to repeal bylaws ninety-six dash sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two dash seven, and twenty nineteen dash seventy-five. That these be passed and enacted. How was the questions from council? Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. We have that uh that late addition, and that's the appointment of our new deputy chief building official. Is there any if uh she was available to be introduced or if anybody wanted to?
He. Uh it's a he.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sree, his first name is Sree.
Great, sorry, my bad. Fifty fifty chance of getting that one right.
Yes, that's that's true. Uh so uh I don't know that he's here, Mr. Dino.
Yeah, I'll uh I'll ask um Adam Adam Farr to uh brief you on that, but Sree is uh certainly been appointed our our deputy building uh officer and also has some personal news that I think was exciting for him.
Thank you, uh CEO Dino. Yeah, uh uh Sri Chandra Kurseti is our new deputy chief building official. He's been with the town for about six months as a building inspector. Um uh uh Sree is posted largely in Penetang, but handles files both in Midland and Penetang. Uh he's a great addition to the team. He's uh well-liked and he's capable in the field. And incidentally, he's getting married next week. So uh so he's off for a couple of weeks, well-deserved, a couple of weeks off, and he'll come back uh an attachment. So uh so we're looking forward to him being with the town for her years to come, hopefully, some.
Congratulations to him and uh good luck with uh with the uh in the future and uh looking forward to working with him. Um so thank you uh Counselor Gordon for bringing that to our attention. And uh the bonus of knowing that uh he'll be in capable hands once he's tied them up with his wife. Uh so uh with that, I'll call the question on the uh bylaws, all those favor. Thank you. Uh that carries. The next we have um by a motion um by Counselor Downer, seconded by uh Counselor Skey, the bylaw twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two being a bylaw to adopt proceedings of the regular council meeting held May the fourth, twenty twenty-two be passed and enacted. And just a second. I see. We have a box. Sorry, I I there was another bylaw. I was confused by it. It's it's a case where you go past eleven o'clock. I think that'll probably get voted now. So with that, uh the bylaw then again is that bylaw twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two being a bylaw adopt proceedings of the regular council meeting held May the fourth, twenty twenty-two be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Thank you, that carries. And finally, uh moved by Counselor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Gordon, this regular meeting of council during at six forty-five PM. All in favor? Thank you. I think that's a new land speed record, but I'm not sure. We'll check with the clerk.